Welcome, everyone. At this time, I would like for those that are at the Diaz to announce their own names. So we'll start down to the right.
Hi, I'm running the public room. I am Leslie Herbie, Assistant to the Clerk.
I am Jackie L. Pender, Public Court.
Hello, I'm Alicia Reese, Vice President of the County Commission Board.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Legal Counsel to the Board.
Thank you all so much, and thanks, everybody, for coming. We certainly appreciate it. It's nice to have a full house. Hopefully, we'll have it our next meeting. No promises. But what I'd like to do is start as we always start with a silent prayer. And then, if I can ask everyone to please stand for the pledge allegiance when we're done. I would like, as you think about this silent prayer, you think about this murderous spirit that is covering this land, and that we pray for young and old, and everyone that has been affected directly or indirectly. Also, I'd like to say, for a former Judge Norbert Nadel, his family, he's also a former county recorder, that we pray for his family. So if we could have a moment of silence. Amen. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, we have some presentations for the Commission on Women and Girls Swearing In Ceremony. Commissioner Denise Dreehouse will lead this process.
Thank you, Madam President. This is my favorite meeting of the year. Welcome, welcome, to the new members of the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls. Welcome to the family members that have also joined here this afternoon. We are thrilled to have you here, and thrilled to get started on the work of the Commission on Women and Girls for the next year. Just, we have a formal resolution in front of us where we will swear in all the new members. We do have some former members with us, also members of the task force, so thank you all for being here and attending. You know, this commission was set up in 2017, I believe it was. It's the first ever, and very unique in the state of Ohio and throughout the country. And the reason we formed the commission was to promote women and girls in Hamilton County, issues that are important to women and girls, and promote women and girls in divisions of leadership here at the county and beyond. And so, I'm going to read off just a couple of things that have been recommendations coming from the Commission on Women and Girls that the board, because you guys recommend, then the county commissioners have to approve of the recommendations. And so, we have always approved of the recommendations of the board. Hopefully, we won't break that string this year. But in year one, we did a pay equity study at the county as a result of the commission recommendation. We have more women on our boards than we have ever had at the county. That was one of the recommendations. Year two, we had a recommendation about victims of domestic violence, and how we needed immediate assistance for those victims on emergency runs. And so, we now have divert running in parts of the county. That was a recommendation. And then, through COVID, which was last year, we did all of our work virtually, which is a huge challenge, but we managed to do a really powerful social media campaign related to mental health and the needs, especially of women and girls who were heavily impacted by COVID-19. And we were hearing a lot of that in the community, and the group came together and did a PSA. So, some of the kinds of things, it gives you a little bit of a flavor of some of the work, and then ongoing issues related to a pay equity pledge, and also period products in schools for girls. Very important issues. So, we're thrilled to have you here, and so, we are going to swear you all in individually. Commissioner Reese, Vice President Reese, is going to read the names. President Dumas and myself will stand in front. You'll receive a certificate and your Commission on Women and Girls pin. I will not be pinning you myself. We're going to let you pin it on yourself. But we all have our pins on to celebrate today. And then, you'll accumulate here. We'll take a group photo, and then you're welcome to, you know, participate in the reception out. We won't, by the way, because we have work to do, because we've got a public hearing, but there's a little reception out front. We hope that you grab a little something on your way out. So with that, I think we need to move down here, and we'll get started.
Thank you, Commissioners. They gave me the hard part of reading the names. I thought you guys loved me. New kid on the block, so if I mispronounce your name, just correct me, and I'll correct it. Luke? Don't hold it against me. Okay, Lucy Becker. Mercedes Briggs. Audrey Chalfy. Did I say that right? Correct me if I'm wrong. I feel like I'm at graduation ceremony here. I love this. Always wanted to do this. All right. Addison Kirk. Julia Polley. Okay, this one, if I'd say it wrong, please correct me. Aditi Perusha Thoman. Perusha? Did I get close? Did I get it close? I did take phonetics in college. Zakari Rochelle. Anna Schmidt. Saran Tefara. Lindsey Woodard. Uh-oh. Going too fast. Okay, as the principal or the president of the college would say, let's give a big round of applause to our girls. Now for the women. Oh, I got one more. I'm sorry, I'm going too quick. Glad the parents aren't here. They would come after me on that. Okay, now for the women. Oh, one more. Okay. I gotta give my colleagues a hurry up over there. All right. We're ready? Okay. Did we get a good picture, everybody? You need them? Okay, you get one at the end, okay. Okay. All right. Judge Carrie Bloom. Our juvenile judge. Our juvenile judge. Okay, this one, don't get mad at me. LaCresser? Lacretia. Lacretia Braxton. Did I say it right? I'm so sorry. Got it wrong. Paula Bram Heager. Did I say it right? Okay, correct me if I get, I don't want to get people's names wrong. Nature Brooks. Rebecca Brown. Naisha Darby. Ryan Dupree. Janine Gage. Paula Lamphley. Janice Lewis. She's probably, she's at the courthouse taking care of business. They haven't adjourned over there yet. Anne Neuer. Melanie Ridgway. Ashley Thomas. And last but not least, Alana Tucker. Elena Tucker, I'm sorry. I'm looking at, look, I'm looking at the paper. I should have looked at you directly. Looking at the paper, not you. All right, let's give it up for our women.
All right, squash in, girls. Squash in, squash in. Here we go, ladies, squash in. Can you get us? Yeah, good? All right, all right. Thank you.
Wow, we need that energy to stay in the room.
So congratulations to all, and we'll be in touch about the work that will now ensue. Yeah, one other thing, I do want to recognize that we've got a task force of volunteers that help organize the group and the work. Some of the members are here, thank you for being here, and some of our members that are rolling over this year are also in the room. So thank you all for coming. Also, my aide Fatima is also a master organizer today.
Okay, great. That's awesome. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
We'll give them a minute.
Oh, we have to guess the resolution?
Yeah.
And at this time, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion.
She's, you might want to wait one second, ladies. Yeah.
We're going to pass the resolution to formally induct you into the Commission on Women and Girls. So, I would like to make a motion to approve of the resolution appointing members to the Hamilton County Commission on Women and Girls.
Second.
Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Now, we're done.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have before us this afternoon some public comments. Let me put my glasses on. And we will get to those. The first one that's on here is Laura Mitchell, the CS Levy. I saw her earlier. Uh-huh. Okay. Oh, so which ones are the public hearing? Jackie? So those are public hearing? Okay. Okay. So Laura is actually for our public hearing, so we're going to go just for general public comments, and I need to put my glasses on. Susan Byall. And you have two minutes for comments as relates to her concern as sewer backup.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I truly appreciate the help you have given when we contacted you regarding a single mother and her family who are unable to pay their bills. You helped them find the necessary resources. You have provided a bus to help communities with food, social services, COVID vaccinations, and other resources. You have listened to our stories of how our houses are being destroyed by sewer backups. Many of you have had the same experiences and are frustrated by the excuses MSD continues to tell the majority of us who asked for help. My neighbors and I in Coveville have been looking for solutions for 50-plus years. We have contacted MSD, the city, and the county. Some homes have received SBU devices, most have not. My sewer backups have reached as high as 44 inches. My basement was waterproof twice in 43 years, but sewer backups remain and come through the floor drains. Recently, my basement flooded again. I received a call from the city. I was told that Coveville was a hotspot. It was asked if my family was affected. I sent pictures of the backup to the city and called MSD. I again was told I probably wasn't eligible due to it being a private issue. MSD came out, did the flow test, and finally, it was determined that sewage had been discharged from the sewers, and it was not coming from my window wells, downspouts, or overland flooding, as MSD had previously concluded. I had a legitimate sewer backup, finally, last Friday, after 55 years MSD has taken responsibility. Will MSD put a device in my basement or yard to ensure this doesn't happen again? Will our street ever be fixed, such as look run? So many of us are waiting for solutions and are tired of MSD's excuses. Tuesday, we heard 40% of the latest group affected are eligible. The consent decree has demanded that SBU information be included in our water bills. This has not happened regularly. More people would be responding if they knew. Please help us fix our sewers so innocent families and children don't have to continue to live in fear every time we have a large rain event. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your persistence, and as you know, MSD is on the top of our list as a priority to try to look at what's going on and how we need to change some things. So, thank you very much. Next, we have Jean Hall.
Good afternoon, everyone. First of all, I just want to say, I've been living on Hewitt Crescent all my life, 50 years. I've moved across the street on the hillside as you turn on my street, okay? I'm not only here, not just for me. I love my neighborhood. I love being back on the street I am, I'm at. I raised my kids there. Four and a half years ago, during a big rainstorm, all the pipes in Cincinnati, or on my side of neighborhood, runs down to my backyard. The manholes are all busted open. There's one that sits directly, maybe 15 yards.
Hold on one second. If we could just have it a little quieter in the back, that would be great. Thank you.
All the stormwater and sewage runs to my backyard to the manholes. I've called MSD out. They said they were going to fix everything. They came and repaired all the manholes except on my hill. So therefore, when the rain, when we hit the big storm in 2016, all the rain runs down to my backyard, where when the manholes were all busted, all the spill came out in my yard and on my hillside, which caused my backyard to slide. My patio dropped about five feet. Only here just to protect my home. I don't want to leave from my home. I'm here to protect my street, not just my street, my neighborhood, and just as well as my city. The pipes in Cincinnati Underground were put in hundreds of years ago, have not once been maintained in the time as my lifetime on my street or in my neighborhood. So I wanted to see if MSD could fix the pipes, okay? Fix underground. Everywhere in Cincinnati is busted. So, everything running to my house is just spilling out. And when they came and repaired the pipes, they didn't do mine, and I want to remain in my house. I feel like I shouldn't have to move for the lack of work that's being done in the city. And I'm here not just for my street, my neighborhood, but the whole entire city needs pipes repaired and serviced underground. And, I'm sorry, is that up?
That's, yeah, I gave you a little extra because I interrupted you, so.
Yes.
But you're, I appreciate your comments, and we're very much aware that this county and just really has antiquated sewer systems, and we're trying to do the best we can. We can do much better, of course, and the cost of repairing, redeveloping those sewer systems is going to be millions and millions, we know that. But it has to be done, and we're trying to figure out the best way and the most cost-efficient way to do it. And we've been very diligent at letting people know what the contact numbers are for MSD, and they are trying much harder, from what I'm hearing, to get in touch with people on a quicker, on a quicker basis. So if you have not contacted them, and I'm sure you have, just do it again, because things, times are changing.
They run afro.
And so, specifically, contact MSD.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have Heather and Jerry. Brit, Brittany? Britton, okay, sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dr. Heather Britton. I live one street over from Jean. I live up on a hill. When she says her sewer system backs up, it backs up for blocks. Your SBU program, I've read, and your consent decree is a general term for everybody who backs up, whether it's a factory, whether it's commercial, whether it's Kmart. So that SBU terminology is not just for private property. But when I read about your consent decree, it's like the community is an afterthought. You spent $50 million in your SBU program, let's say, last year, with a 24% determined increase every year after that. 222.2 million dollars with an estimate of $1.4 billion for the whole program. And I think that's ridiculous if you do not have people who are paying attention to how this money is spent. We sat here the other day, and we heard your MSD executive director explain to you the process. But there's something about knowing terminology and then living the experience. It's totally different. And if your house has not been flooded like mine, and I sent my videos, and I don't see them up there, of sewage backup coming out of the basement, coming out of the toilet, coming out of the sinks, coming out of the manholes, we just put in $5,000 worth of appliances in our basement, and they are not working, and they haven't been working in over a week. Have you ever been in a house and it smells like crap? You can open up the windows, but there's no relief. The air, the furnace my husband just put in, it doesn't work. We really need you to pay attention to how this money is being spent, and not to give MSD another dime for Phase 2, 2A, whatever they have given you guys, until you actually investigate whether they're spending the money according to what you voted them, to how it's supposed to be spent, and that you gave them.
Okay, thank you very much. And I just wanted to make a couple comments on your video. Your video can be submitted to our clerk of the board, and then we will get a chance to take a look at the video. Okay. Okay. Well, normally, we don't run other videos, but we will get the video ourselves and then take a look at the videos that you submit. I'm sure that she will give them to us. And in addition, as you were saying, you were at the last meeting, and I mentioned the fact that SBU, I understand the purpose of it, but there are so many people that fall in the cracks of SBU. And if they don't qualify, how can we rectify or give some partial remedy to those who don't qualify for SBU? And so, I know we're going to look at that as, because there's too much of a percentage of those that don't qualify. So how do we go about giving some help to those? And also, I mentioned that we need to revise, look at the guidelines for SBU. Do we need to revise? Do we need to add on some other guidelines so more people qualify? So I will also say that our board is going to be and has been very diligent at looking at the expenditures, and I'm not saying the other boards have not, but we are really having a keen eye on the monies that are spent, and also that the administration that's there currently is open to our suggestions, and that they report to us on a regular basis to let us know what's going on. So I think all three of us indicated that our basements have been flooded before. I live on a street that's, the last part of it says Creek, so underneath you can hear the water, and so I had to get like a double sump pump. But I know we all have our stories, but we have to do something more to help. And I'll certainly let you guys make a comment when we finish with the, okay. So Willie Hopkins?
Good afternoon, ladies.
Good afternoon.
My name is Willie Hopkins. And my problem is nowhere as bad as theirs. I moved, we moved in this house in Pleasant Ridge, and everything was going fine. One day, I'd look up, it's 300 degrees outside, and I see all this water running all on the sidewalk and all down the driveway, so I called a water company. They said, well, they came out, it's not our fault, it's, you know, MSD. So I called MSD, oh, it ain't our fault, it's. So, you know, I start calling, and it kept getting worse. And then, that winter, it was ice all over the street, you know? I had to park my car in front of, out in the ice to keep people from slipping and falling. So I start calling plumbers. Plumbers came out, they couldn't find anything wrong. So, but each one gave me advice, you know, like, have a camera look. So after, at that time, I was 75 years old. I picked up my shovel, and I went out and dug up every pipe. I have pictures of everything in the yard, and I finally found a problem. 500 years ago, I guess y'all had the clay pipes, the orange pipes, well, it was busted. And it was busted because when they put the street back in, when they redid the street, put it in the curb, they didn't, whoever did the job did not put the hole back in so the water could come out. So after a while, the pressure wound up busting the pipe. So I came down to a meeting, I came down to a meeting, and I talked to y'all. After the meeting, the guy came up and gave me his card. His name was Mr. Gay. So, you know, and he referred me to Irving, Ewing, and then there was a Fleming. So I got talking to all them, then I did work. They finally came out and did the work, supposedly. I showed them where, you know, it's still water out here, and it was supposed to be fixed, my retaining wall, every, water's still all over the place, so people, you always say, well, we don't have the money. Well, you would have money if you stopped paying contractors to do lousy work. So, you know, I have the pictures for whoever wants to see them, and it's still not done, and our property looks bad because our retaining wall is falling down, cracks all over the, cracks all over the, you know, the place. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome, and you certainly can submit uh the pictures to our clerk, and we'll make sure that we all see them, so. Okay, um, thank you. Um, we have Verdel Hicks. No, you're not speaking? Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Okay. And at this time, um, if our colleagues wanted to make any comments, you certainly can, since I made some. We normally don't when there are public comments, but if you'd like to, you certainly can.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I, I think it is appropriate to make some comments on um this particular issue. Um, I'm actually glad that you all came down on Tuesday because a lot of times we have public comment, the people that's doing the work is not here. Uh, neither one of us are MSD experts. We're not going out there. We only are getting what they're telling us. And the way that our system is set up in Hamilton County, we own it, but the city is the ones that do the operations. So I, I thought it was important, it doesn't make sense for, for me to have the MSD Director coming here telling us this, that, and the other, and the people are not here. Of course, you weren't able to speak, but you could hear directly from that Director. You could talk directly to the Director, not a 1-800 number, not a call center. Um, and I think that uh for me, that's how I like to do things. And I think that um our board has said, you know, many times, you know, we're looking into this and we want to have improvements. And I know it's a tough job. Now, a couple of things that you all have recommended, before I got here, I understand that some of those, a lot of that input um from our Administrator Jeff Valuto, uh, he prepared uh something in writing. Some of your things that you have uh submitted have been implemented. Uh, and I think that's a good thing that we did hear from the community. Uh, we have also looked at how we be, how are we able to, during this tough time, help keep it uh become affordable for you. Uh, we have sent legislation, because that's a state component. Uh, we sent legislation to uh the Governor directly. I know the Governor got it. Uh, but the legislators said, well, we want to put it in a bill. And you know, once they get to Columbus with a bill, um, you know, we don't know if it ever happened. We tried to get it in the budget bill, it didn't happen, which would have gave us a lot more flexibility. In some areas, our hands are tied, but we will be continuing to keep uh the feet to the fire. What I did here Tuesday, Madam President, and uh we had asked about this, and you asked about it as well. We do have an SBU, and they said, report coming soon. And we want that report immediately. Uh, what's working, what's not working? How mu- how many people got help? How many people didn't get help? So we know what to tweak um in the future. And we also have asked, uh, one of the things I submitted to the Administrator is looking at a potentially a proactive fund, maybe a basement fund, and it won't be able to help everybody, but it'd be set up like PWC comes in and help with uh issues in senior homes. Maybe there's something creatively, a basement fund to help us get there. So you don't have, don't wait to the problem. We got it fixed before you have a problem. So we are looking at new ways to do it and innovative ways to do it. And I just wanted to reiterate that. But I would like to say this, Madam President. If the SBU is not on the water bill, I don't know if it is or not. If it's not on there, I don't know who's in charge of it. But it seems like that could be a small, simple fix. It won't be fixing everything. But if that's something that can be done, I don't know if that goes into our preview or if that's over at the city's preview. Uh, but considering that they went up on the water bill, at least they could put this SBU phone number on there. Um, so I would just request that if it's not within our power, if we can make a formal request, that it be added in the future on bills if it hasn't been done already.
Madam President, Vice President Reese has, so as of just a few minutes ago, we requested that information of MSD as to whether or not it is on, on the water bill. And if not, typically, it is a request to Greater Cincinnati Water Works to put it on there, either the county or MSD could make that request, but we'll follow up on it immediately.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Thank you. Commissioner Greathouse?
Yeah, I, I had just leaned over to Jeff about the same thing uh because it seems like such a small thing that we can easily do quickly uh to make sure that people are familiar with the SBU program. I thought it was on there because I think we requested this a while back. So we'll follow up and make sure of that. The other thing is the Customer Assistance Program uh that was referred to that is in place. We did not need legislation from the state to do that one. We did that ourselves. Others, we need the state legislators to act on. So that should also be on the water bill um just to make sure people are aware that there is a, you know, a relief program there. So I appreciate you all coming in. We've met many times before. Um, it, it is complicated. Since we own City Runs, a utility, we are trying to fix that overall issue. As you know, it's been four years um go- and going from my perspective. Uh, and we're still working on it. It's been very difficult and more challenging than I think, I know I anticipated. Um, however, uh, we just had a conversation um with our attorneys on Tuesday about trying to move that thing forward. So um, we appreciate your diligence. We're trying to be diligent as well. Uh, but thanks as always for coming in and lending your perspective.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just have to reiterate, you guys were here on Tuesday, and I just thank you so much for coming back today. Um, I'm going to go on and move into our public hearing, if it's okay with my colleagues, and then we can go back to our comments and motions. So our public hearing is to consider the Children's Services Levy, and we have some people that are here that would like to speak. Uh, Laura Mitchell is here concerning the levy.
Commissioner, did you want um us to do a, a brief tee up for that?
Okay, certainly, yeah.
Uh, just, just, just for folks who may be at home, just to, uh, and, and Lisa Webb, who is our Tax Levy Review Analyst, uh, is usually here. So apologies, apologies to the board for me standing in um uh in, in her place, but...
And I just want to apologize to you because he's so nice that he met with me earlier before the meeting. He said, I'm going to tee it up. I said, okay, well, and I completely forgot, but you'd never let anybody know that I had missed.
Not, not a problem. So, uh, but the uh, the hearing today is to receive comment, uh, public comment on the Children's Services Levy. Um, for those who are watching at home or may not be familiar with the levy, uh, we're receiving public comment on the levy as well as the Tax Level Review Committee's uh recommendations regarding the Children's Services Levy. Uh, a few notes about the Children's Services Levy before opening uh for public comment. Number one, uh, the Children's Services Levy is actually two levies uh together at this point. There's an original levy last approved in 2016. Uh, and there's a supplemental levy uh last, which was approved in 2018, on the 2018 ballot, both of which expire at the end of December 2021. This is the county's largest total levy, generating approximately $78 million per year, uh, set at 4.75 mils. Uh, the service funded, the services funded through the levy are largely mandated by state and federal government and are carried out through Hamilton County Job and Family Services. Just a few examples of the types of services uh that are funded uh through the Children's Services Levy would be the operation of the 241 Kids, 24-hour hotline to report abuse and neglect, uh, investigations of abuse, dependency, and neglect with children, uh, providing services so children can remain safely in their home, whether that's emergency housing, mental health, substance abuse treatment, domestic violence programs, uh, parent training and mentoring, uh, as well as placing children in temporary care with kin or foster care when necessary, providing pre and post adoption services, and preparing older teens to live independently. So there's a lot of other programs funded through uh JFS, whether it's Adult Protective Services, Public Assistance, Workforce Development. This would not include those. Uh, the Tax Level Review Committee recommended allowing the supplemental levy to lapse and putting forward a renewal of the initial levy with an increase to maintain the revenues at the current level of approximately 78 million. So essentially combining uh those two levies. As always, the levy will be subject to a midpoint review in early 2024. Uh, the TLRC also recommended that the levy continue to support mandated services in addition to funding additional services to make substantial positive changes within the Children's Services System. Everything from expanding efforts uh to increase and retain staff, increasing services for older youth, assessing programming for family and youth homelessness, enhancing uh collaborations with community stakeholders, and expanding community health initiatives uh for, uh, through Children's Services. Um, there are actually uh two or three by leaves today, uh Commissioners, that relate uh to this matter. So the board may want to take those up following the hearing. Uh, these are by leaves two through four uh in your packet, and they relate to uh, on July 29th, uh, we've scheduled uh on the board, at the board meeting for the board to actually approve uh to certify a levy, a levy amount to the ballot. Uh, these three items uh are a necessity in terms of going to the auditor's office and, and having the calculation done of what millage produces what revenue. So I want to make it very clear for the public who may be watching at home that as the board passes by leaves two, three, and four, you are not actually today certifying something to the ballot. You are only sending these to the auditor's office for the certification of a millage and the revenue that that produces. So uh with that, uh, Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you and happy to hear public comment.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for the clarity. And those that are watching, if you have comments that you'd like to make as it relates to the, the levy, you're certainly able to do that. Um, you can either send either of us uh emails or you can um send an email also to our county administrator. So thank you, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'm very excited and happy to be able to talk to you today. So thank you for the opportunity. Um, so I just completed a 27-year career as a teacher, as a principal, and a superintendent, and know firsthand um from experience the needs of our children in this area. Um, I'm now uh leading a nonprofit that has the wonderful job of providing services for our kids in terms of mental health, adoption, kinship, foster care, as well as prevention services. And so as I think about how complex the needs are of our young people, and I also think about my history and career, and now the pandemic, we have a heightened sense of urgency to provide services for our young people. During the pandemic, when kids were not in school, many times it was more difficult for them to receive the mental service, mental health services that they normally receive. Um, the providers did a wonderful job of going into the schools, but it wasn't quite the same. Um, our kids are suffering as it relates to being isolated. Um, suicide ideation um is up, and there are a whole host of other issues our young people are experiencing. And I could go through a lot of facts and numbers which I have, but I'm going to give you a couple of really quick stories. Last year, when schools were in virtual learning, we noticed that many high school students were not signing into their, uh, their classes with their teachers, their face-to-face through the video teleconference mechanism. And it was because many of them were out working to help support their families. Uh, we had teachers who were telling kids, go in your home and find a quiet place to uh take this test. And we had one mom who screamed and yelled at the teacher, you're telling me to go and find a quiet place for my child? There are five of us who are living in a hotel room. There's no quiet place. And so you think about the trauma that the mother was experiencing and the trauma that the kids were experiencing as well. And so we need desperately services for our young people. At the same time, I've seen the benefit of having mental health services and uh foster care and all of those things in place. I've seen foster kids who are in very specific targeted programs graduate and go on to do very well. And so I thank you for your um hopefully continued support in this effort for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to you. And Beach Acres does awesome stuff, yeah, for sure. I worked there for many years, so congratulations to you. And thank you for your comments as it relates to the levy. Uh, Margaret Holbert?
Good afternoon, President DuMoss and Commissioners Reese and Rehouse. Um, it's a great pleasure to be here to speak to you on behalf of the levy. And first, let me thank you for serving all of us as well. As I listened to all the problems you're dealing with, I remember we have to say thank you to you too, so thank you. Um, I am actually a member, a founding member of the Human Services Planning Committee and served on it for over 20 years. And so I have a long history with watching this levy in that department. And I have to tell you that Jobs and Family Services has been very unique in its approach in dealing with all the things that you're dealing with today and all the families who have need. Um, our county is known throughout the state and actually recognized nationally for the fact that they identify problems, they come up with solutions, and they try innovative approaches. And that can't be said for all the counties in the state or for all the, the child welfare systems in the country. Um, I have watched our county lose staff, gain staff, and take, um, take really innovative approaches to how that they will continue to serve families and try to serve them well. When they identify problems, they seek solutions. They measure their effectiveness and efficiency. And the other thing that I would really want to point out, because I think it's critical, they develop partnerships with the other public agencies in our county and also with the private sector. They have some of the strongest private sector partnerships that I have seen. And all of them, all of that makes them really good stewards of this levy. So I hope that you will enthusiastically support the renewal and the combination of the two levies and that we will see those pass again because our citizens have always seen the value of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Dr. Paul Lichtenstein?
Thank you. For the record, it's, it's Phil Lichtenstein. It's, uh, but that's okay. That mistake has been made many, many times in my career. And I have to say that uh, it's a, it's, it's an honor to be here. Uh, it's actually been on my bucket list to uh be able to attend a meeting of the county commissioners.
Wow.
And uh, so, thank you very much. The, uh, it's the first time that I've done this. I'm here in behalf of the Children's Home of Cincinnati. Uh, I'm subbing in for my CEO, Dr. John, or Mr. John Banshee. Uh, and I just want to let you know that uh uh, we are tremendous supporters of the work that this levy has done for disadvantaged kids in the community. Uh, the Children's Home, as you probably know, is the biggest provider of outpatient Medicaid mental health services uh in Hamilton County. Uh, we uh provide services for somewhere between 14,000 and 15,000 individual kids per year. And uh, at any given time, uh, between 15 and 20% of those kids uh are kids who uh have, are in foster care or have been placed in foster care at some time in their lives. Now, I am the, uh, I've been the medical director at the Children's Home for the last 10 years. I'm currently Associate Medical Director as I approach uh retirement at some point in the future. Uh, we see in our service uh the uh, the uh kids, victims of abuse, victims of neglect, uh, you know, victims of family tragedy uh who've been placed in foster care, who have the most significant, uh, was difficult to treat, mental health problems. Am I done?
Well, you can complete your sentence.
I can tell you that uh, uh, we get a disproportionate share of uh the difficult kids. Uh, we probably, on any given day, you know, probably a third of the kids who I see are in foster care, have significant mental health issues. And the challenge for us uh is uh having the funding, the resources that we need to be able to restore these kids to uh some sense of uh emotional balance, uh, to make them functional again in their communities, in their schools, uh, to keep them out of psychiatric emergency rooms, keep them out of uh the psychiatric wards. Uh, and it...
That's a long sentence, Dr. Phil.
A long sentence.
But thank you so much for coming, certainly appreciate. And I'm sitting here thinking, I did my internship in college at Children's Home, and I'm thinking, where haven't I worked? But anyway, uh, yeah, but thank you so much for coming.
Could I make one last comment, please? If I can just impose on you.
Ask the audience.
So...
Okay.
One last run-on sentence before I sit down. And that is that uh, I think that there is a vital need uh with levy to uh have funding that supports uh the maintenance and active use of a data dashboard uh so that you've got a good sense
Absolutely.
of what your partnering agencies are doing to contribute to the recovery of these children uh and to make sure that you're getting, you're getting bang for the buck in terms of quality outcomes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Maybe we'll talk later.
I would love to talk with you.
Okay. But thank you so much, and I'm glad that you are able to scratch off your, on your bucket list. Thank you so much. Uh, Kenneth Mitchell?
Fine, thank you. Um... Dang, I'm not really good at speaking to people.[1779.34]
My name's Kenneth Mitchell. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you all on behalf of Hamon County and Children's Services and Levy both. Okay, I'm not gonna read this. I'm sorry. I'm here to say that Levy, Hamilton County and Children's Services has helped me tremendously in all kinds of ways. Hemi would give me the mentor that I've needed. He's helped me in financial ways and educational ways, and I truly wouldn't be where I am today without these programs. I am a victim of the foster system. I went through terrible and horrible things in my life. And both of these programs and with the people inside of these programs has helped me in various ways from support, just all kinds of things. I truly would have never graduated high school. I mean, I attended TAF. I was on a real bad path in life. Literally until I met Don, who was my mentor, Hemi, so on so forth. I'm now a double major at UC, majoring in IT and business. What else can I say? I don't know, man. These programs truly help kids like me. It's just amazing how you can get people who truly care about kids because we don't have a lot of, once again, a lot of support at all. I mean, when you can gather people to do what they do for free and literally not get paid. I was baffled when I found out my mentor didn't get paid because, yeah, it's kind of hard dealing with kids like me. But I'm just here to tell you that what you're doing and what you're funded to programs like this are truly helping us. So thank you so much.
And thank you so much. Thank you for your story and sharing, Kenneth, and coming forward. And so I did hear you say you're a survivor of the foster care system. You are a victim of this foster care system. We're gonna flip that a little and we're gonna say you're a survivor of the foster care system. You made it through and a lot of them have not made it through. So congratulations to you. Okay. Okay, Neil Tillum.
Do I have to follow him?
Yeah. Yes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for, thanks for having me. My name is Neil Tillow. I think I know most of you. I'm, I work at Talbert House and I'm here on behalf of the Hamilton County Levy Steering Committee, which I'm privileged to help run again. And we're, we're organized to help make sure the levy passes. And I'm happy to tell you the last three or four levies that we've run, we passed near 70% each time. So that tells me the community really supports keeping these children safe, keeping them in healthy homes, keeping them good in assessment, prevention and treatment services coordinated by our terrific JFS system. It's made progress each, each term, dealing with the reports that come out and ways to improve, to improve kinship care, to improve services, to have them be more intensive, to be responsive, to meet the, the terms that the TLRC and the Commission and others have put upon them. So we're really pleased that's hap, that's happened. Keeping kids in safe, loving homes is everyone's goal. That's what we want. You know, we don't want kids necessarily to be in the foster care systems if they don't have to be. If they have to be, we want them to be great foster care programs, but we prefer kids to stay in their homes, wouldn't we? Or in their families, some, some family members' home. And generally takes multiple approaches and our system cooperation to make all this work. And that's what the levy is all about. It's not gonna happen any other way. These is, as Jeff said, these are mandated services and we need to make sure that this happens. JFS has been a positive broker of these services. They're responsible, coordinate this care to make sure it happens. And without this levy, that would never happen. I believe children will be, will be victims if the levy doesn't pass. I think, I think we'll have, it'll be a disaster if things, this levy doesn't pass. And I'm gonna do everything I can and the rest of the steering committee is, and I think the voters will support this levy. We ask for your support. You've always given us before and we pray that you give it to us this time too. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good seeing you. Certainly passage of this levy, in my opinion, of course, and I'm sure the board is in agreement. Great things will happen and great things have happened through the passage of the previous levies. Okay, thank you all for coming forward. I would like to go back to Jeff and
Madam President?
Yes.
I believe we have a couple people on the Zoom that would like to speak as well and have their hands raised.
One more speaker card?
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, why don't, why don't you can come up and then we can have you fill out a card so we'll have a record of it. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dan Biers. I appreciate the opportunity being here today. I'm currently living in the Lighthouse Youth, Lighthouse Youth Services, semi-independent. I came into the program at 17. I had some living skills, living on my own, but I needed help in some other ways. First time living on my own and at first it was pretty scary. It was really quiet. I wasn't used to it. And so I've gotten used to it now. And I understand that like I'm on my own now. At the age of nine, me and my sisters and my brother were all in foster care. My brother and I were placed in one home. My sisters were in another. And even though our foster parents were family members, we've still rarely got to see each other. We only saw each other in their family gatherings and visits with our mom. While in foster care, we were only given one visit a week with our mom for two hours. And it's kind of hard on the family because can't do a lot in two hours. At the age of 13, I made a bad decision in life, which caused me and my siblings to go back into foster care. Well, my siblings to go in the foster care, I was sent to a group home for treatment. Again, I messed up at the group home when, which I was moved into a residential treatment facility. I was in this facility for two years. In that facility, I learned a lot about myself, learned how to control my emotions and my impulses as well. Once I graduated that facility, I've moved into another group home because I wasn't allowed to go back with my mom. My mom lost custody of us. And so I'm, and I went into YDC, which is the group home I went into. And I quickly showed them that I was ready for semi-independent. So I'm at to this day. I'm also working at Collective Market and have been there for about two months. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great comments. Thank you. All right, you have a couple people on. Okay. 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 Certainly.
My name is Jada Davis and I'm a current foster parent for Hamilton County. I've been doing foster care for 23 years. And these levies that you speak of, I have a saying, when children come to my home, every child should come on a sedative and an antidepressant. Because the mental health issues that they face when they're taken away from their parents and separated and unknown by coming to my house is enough to make anyone, anyone, including me. You know, and I see these children and right now I have four foster children in my home. Services are limited. As far as the therapists, they're hard to get right now. There's a shortage. With the pandemic, my mother passed away. We lived with my mother. So on top of not seeing their parents, on top of not being able to socialize with other people, on top of everything else, they lived in a house where COVID affected the household because my mother died, passed from COVID. So this has been going on for a year and a half and then to get back into school. But I think the levy would be great to help every child who comes into care, every child that comes into care. Some say they don't need the services. A lot of them, they're not that they need the services, but most of them do need services. And I would just love to see that levies being pushed through. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you for coming forward. Certainly appreciate it. And Jada, I'm sorry for your loss also. You're very, for sure. We've all been through, that's for sure. Okay, we'll go to the Zoom.
Thanks, Madam President. We have Santoshi Mahendra is up first. Santoshi, you are unmuted on my end.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to speak today. Some of you have heard my testimony previously, approximately a few weeks ago, so apologies for any redundancies. My name is Santoshi Mahendra. I'm a lifelong Cincinnati resident, recent graduate of MBA program Xavier and recently joined Kroger as a professional position. I'm coming to you as a board member of Lighthouse Youth Services and as someone who also has lived foster care experience with Lighthouse Youth Services. So there's many experiences within the foster care system that I could provide testimony of. And previously, as well as today, I would like to provide testimony of the transitional care for transitional age youth that are coming out of foster care services. As a foster care youth who has been through childhood trauma, who has a diagnosis of post-traumatic stress disorder, obviously you're receiving medical care and mental health care services. Transitioning from foster care straight into whether you're going into an apartment or in my case, a dorm at a university can be traumatic in itself because you're going from receiving a lot of support, whether it's medical, mental health, foster care parents, social worker, therapist, to no support at all. So to help strengthen that transition and to help transition age youth like myself to have a successful transition and be able to transition into adult life seamlessly, I strongly advocate and support for the passage of this levy to help provide those services. I am seeing firsthand how Lighthouse is impacting those transition age youth and how they're supporting them in ways that I wish I could have had those type of supports. But I'm excited to see those youth receiving those type of supports now going forward. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much for coming to us again. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have Rachel Hudson. Rachel, you're unmuted on my end.
Hello, thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I am a veteran. I'm a single mom. I'm a foster mom. I currently have a nine-month-old who was brought to my home as a foster placement, but she is technically a family member that I was unaware of existed before 30 days to family. And I used to work in social work. And hats off to those of you who are still working or have since stopped working and still found other ways to be effective. I'm now a mortgage lender and that's my way of being effective is to help families get into homes. I'm coming today to talk to you about kinship and the lack of support for kinship. I know for me personally, the two babies that I've taken placement of over the years, I refuse to take as kinship because I know the lack of support. There's a lack of support, especially for single foster parents, let alone kinship providers. There's a family that used to live directly across the street from me who are kinship providers. They are grandparents. Their youngest daughter is 20. And they have adopted two of their grandchildren and taking in four of their grandchildren for kinship. I helped them get a house barely because in order to provide for six children that are now under their roof, they're all under the age of 12 is obviously a challenge for them. And the lack of support that they receive is just baffling. The amount of money that they make is, per child, is a minimum of $320 less than what I make being a foster care provider. And I know personally that one of them is a military veteran. Obviously, when you retire, you're on fixed income. And this is just detrimental to the care that they can provide. And especially for a system that is, definitely has some injustice throughout it and is kind of catered to reunification with family, especially if it is kinship and it's a healthy family member, then there should definitely be more resources. And thank you also, I believe it was Madam President, I'm so sorry if I have your position wrong, but for speaking live into Kenneth, because that was another note that I had had is that you are not a victim, you are definitely a survivor. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. And before you hang up, if you could email me, I would certainly like to know more about the lack of support as it relates to the kinship program. And just take a look at that as far as those specific incidents that you had talked about. I'd certainly like to know more.
Yes, ma'am. Where would I find your email address at?
Look on, look on my website. It's on there, on my website, on the county website. Stephanie dot Summerodumas at Hamilton hyphen C O dot org.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have
Dominique Eli is up next.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so it's actually pronounced Dominique Eli, but it's okay. I get that often. I am coming to you as a supervisor and a foster care placement coordinator for Lighthouse Youth and Family Services located in Hamilton County. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak and to continue to shine light on the great work that I have had the opportunity to see JFS do. I've been in my position for about three years. Over these three years, I've had the opportunity to work firsthand with Hamilton County Job and Family Services. I've seen them go above and beyond to ensure that our youth have the appropriate services and resources within and outside of the foster home. JFS makes it a habit to ensure that children in foster care are given every opportunity to live a, live a life that doesn't revolve around foster care. They are able to live a life with joy, happiness, to feel safe in their foster home and normacy. Although JFS is great when it comes to providing opportunities for camps, clubs, mentoring chips, outings and promoting positive peer-to-peer interactions and relationships within the community, they're equally as passionate about doing it to provide foster youth services such as mental health, medical, ensuring that they get the appropriate referrals for schooling and ensuring that they are meeting developmental milestones, life milestones, getting what they need to go out into the world after they age out of the foster care system. I have, and JFS makes that possible. So I'm so thankful to be here today, ensuring that we can continue funding for those services and those resources so that they are readily available and easily accessible. I hope that in my brief speaking today, it has allowed all parties to understand and continue to see the importance of the Children's Services Levy. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and I look forward to continue the good work.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
Madam President, I have a note that a couple more people would like to speak, but if you'd like to speak, just please raise your hand and we will call on you. And the hand button is at the bottom navigation bar for you if you're looking for it.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone who has spoken either by Zoom or in person. We certainly appreciate it and we listened, we heard you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing for the Children's Services Levy. Second.
Ms. Summerodumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drewhouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I'd like to go back to you, Jeff, if we could, of the bylaws that are related to this levy.
Absolutely, Madam President. Thank you. And as I do that, I do want to acknowledge a couple of people. Number one, Lisa Webb, who I indicated is not here today. But I do want to thank Lisa for all of her great work with the Tax Labor Review Commission. I do want to thank the TLRC itself for all their work on this as well. And also, I believe although the pillar is finally, after 10 years, getting in my way. I know Margie Weaver is here, Assistant Director for Children's Services. I can see Margie. I'm not sure if anyone else is back there behind the pillar, but just want to thank all the great JFS staff who really do great work related to this levy and broadly as it relates to human services throughout the county. So
Madam President, can we, before people leave the room, can we have a couple comments from Commissioners?
Sure.
So I too want to thank you all for coming, especially the young people that spoke to us. It's very compelling to hear your stories and to help us better understand the impacts of what we're, what we have in front of us today. So thank you. And I think the other young man left, but thank you for being here. To the foster parents and the kinship caregivers that were on the line, thank you for what you're doing. We need people like you in the community to step up and you have certainly done that. So thank you for your participation and the providers as well for what you do on a daily basis to make the systems work. So, you know, this levy is, I think it's a little challenging because we have a levy and then we've got an additional levy that we passed two years later because we needed more caseworkers, we needed reduced case loads. We needed reduced case loads. We needed strategies to keep kids safely at home. We needed larger stipends, or a stipend rather, for kin caregivers, which we now have. This levy, if passed, will allow us to increase that. We heard that need. And I think that's entirely appropriate from my perspective. And you know, it allows us to create these strategies that hopefully keep kids safely at home or return them safely to home. But if that is not an option, then we are incentivizing kinship care and then also offering support to foster parents as well. So I'm, you know, this community has, as always, supported Children's Services Levy. The challenge this year is that we're combining two and the ballot language says that we have a levy with an increase. And it's not an increase. It's flat. At least that's one of the options in front of us. And so I do think we've got our work cut out for us by way, depending on where we go as a board, to make sure that the community understands not only the need for these dollars and the ongoing dollars for the work that's so well done by JFS, but also that this language is not a clear representation of what we're actually doing. So I think more to come on that. But thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And I apologize for not opening it up for my colleagues to make comments. So Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do want to just join with, certainly I appreciate all the work that our agencies do and Jobs and Family Services do from the agency level. But I think what really matters even to the agencies is the people that we're trying to help. And to hear from these two young men and understanding that when we're born, we don't get to choose our parents. Wouldn't that be great? I wouldn't choose any other parents than mine, but there's some out there that would make a different choice. So you're born into what you're born into. And a lot of our young people are born behind. And it's hard to catch up. And it's rough out here. And life is tough. And for you to overcome these odds and be at, be in college, the other young man overcome his odds, be able to work, that's what shows the voters who voted for this, that they made the right decision. So as we move forward, it's going to be those kind of stories. The foster care, foster care moms and dads who have success stories, who are stepping up to the plate. The grandmas and grandpas that are stepping up and stepping up with their family members. It's the stories that are going to be able to help us get this moving forward past the explanation that we're going from two to one. Maybe that might be it. I'm a marketer, so I'm looking, I'm getting my themes together from two to one, right? But I think it's those kind of stories that we've got to start sharing in broader platforms so that people know what works. Obviously, there's other things we can be doing. We want to know those things. What can we do differently? What can we add? What's needed? But even right now with COVID, you know, we heard the testimony to the foster mom, you know, losing her mom to COVID. And here she is trying to help be a mom to someone else. And she's got these other issues. So there's a lot of complexities. But I think if we start to tell the stories, I think we'll be moving in the right direction. So I know it's complicated. We're going to have by leave one, what, two, three, four, and everything else. But, but, but once we do make our final decision, I just think that the stories is what hit you. Because I know I was ready to grab my tissue hearing the stories of these young people that's overcoming these incredible odds in our society. So thank you, Madam President. And I know we're going to look at this and I'm looking forward to having further discussion as we move forward.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate both of you. And make no mistake, we do appreciate the older people too that have been in the field for a long time. And they are able to speak really too. And so we wanted to let you guys know that we appreciate you too. Okay, we're gonna move over to Jeff again.
Thank you, Madam President. So included as by leaves two, three, and four, three options related to, or three scenarios related to the Children's Services Levy. Again, we typically run several options just for the purpose of having, being able to have discussion with the board on the level of different revenues and how that relates to the ability for the agency to carry out programming, et cetera. But I do want to highlight that by leave two is the TLRC recommended option. So the board would vote on July the 29th, Thursday, July the 29th, to certify a preferred scenario to the November ballot. And I will walk through each of those right now. By leave two, again, it comports with the Tax Labor Review Committee's recommendation. This would be essentially combining the two levies that exist now into a renewal with an increase on top of the initial levy. So it would be 4.51 mils per $1 of valuation, which amounts to 45 and 1/10ths for each $100 of valuation for five years, would produce roughly $78 million in revenue. So the board's approval of this would authorize the administration to work with the auditor's office to certify an amount of revenue that this would produce. The administration recommends approval of by leave two.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up for my colleagues. Vice President Reese, any comments?
No further comments.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse. At that point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leaves three and four are similar. They both show a reduced levy amount of around between 60 and 61 million, but they show it by either doing a renewal or a replacement. And depending upon whether a levy is a replacement or a renewal, for lack, it's complex, but for lack of a better term, controls whether or not existing or historical property tax values are taken into account. So a one mil of property tax will generate a different amount of revenue, whether it's a renewal or whether it's a replacement. So by leave three and four, by leave three is a renewal. It is for 3.77 mils per each $1 valuation, or 0.377 for each $100 evaluation for five years, producing roughly $61 million. Again, this would certify or authorize the administration to work with the auditor to certify this amount in terms of the revenue and millage, the revenue that would be produced by this millage. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And by leave four does essentially the same thing, produces roughly $60 million, but as a replacement, it's at 2.77 mils or 0.277 for each $100 evaluation for five years. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you so much. Any discussion on by leave four?
No.
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? I'm sorry. Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
She already did me.
I know she did.
Madam President, may I comment? In Lisa Webb's absence, I want to thank her for doing this. They always, the administration always provides us with the options that we need in order to make a decision here related to the levies. And I too want to join all of you thanking the TLRC, Glenn McFarland, the Chair, and especially the subcommittee members that brought these recommendations to us, John Silverman, Ennis Tate, and Jenny O'Donnell for their years of service and their hours of consideration for this levy.
Thank you. TLRC, they rock. I mean, they've worked and they've met every week almost to make this happen. And we just, you know, I've worked at many places, but we have the greatest county staff. It's just, makes our job so much easier. We ask for something and they get it to us and they work on it very hard. Okay.
Madam President, so again, just on the 29th of July, the administration will have resolutions related to all three of these prepared so the board can make a final decision on what to certify to the November ballot.
I have it on my calendar. Thank you. All right. Thank you for clarity on that. So we'll go to the front. I know you have one other by leave, but it's kind of order, out of order. So we'll just go to comments and motions of our commissioners. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Trying to get it together today. I am one staff member short today, although Egger is doing a great job today filling in for my chief of staff. He got married this past weekend. And actually called me yesterday and I told him, what are you doing? So we banned him from calling. But I want to congratulate him, Quentin Monroe and Ayesha now Monroe. So we're very excited about that. Also, I'm excited about the Hard Rock Casino. And I just remember the voters of Hamilton County, I think we were number one in voting to have casinos in Ohio. And we went through a little bump. They tried to stop the casino and we said no. And they got it moving. But we got new owners. We got Hard Rock. We've got the, the guitar is out. We are official. We're ready to rock and we're ready to roll and very excited about that. And they had a great kickoff today and one that they had, I believe on Tuesday, that I had a chance to attend. Also want to say 513 Relief Bus is out. It is out and moving and grooving. It is a caravan of relief. I think we're the only one in the country that has the mobile market that comes out and we put money toward that as a board. The mobile market comes out, the 513 Relief Bus comes out, Jobs and Family Services is out. So you can get your vaccine, you can get food, and you can get all the economic resources. And we are getting some great stories. I know Bridget Doherty and Ayesha are capturing those stories of people who are, who we are getting, who are hard to serve. And they said, well, a wife told her husband, no, you're going to get up there and you're going to take the shot. And he's like, no, I'm not. She said, yes, you are. And he took the shot and then came out and said, I want to tell everyone, it doesn't hurt. Get the shot. So that was exciting. So those stories are being captured. You can go to 513relief.org to find out where the bus is going next. This Saturday will be in Avondale at the NAACP Block Party. So it is out and moving. And so anyway, that's it. Oh, yes. And the Black Music Walk of Fame kickoff will be next Saturday. And it's going to be at 2 o'clock inside the new icon, Andrew Brady Icon Music Center. So, and that is free and open to the public. So that's all I have right now, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Since the Commission on Women and Girls ceremony took so long, I'm going to limit my comments to one. So we passed the parental leave policy. All three of us supported that. And I just want to say that I was alerted yesterday that the Board of Elections has now also passed a parental leave policy. And you know, part of the goal was to lend an example and a kind of a pathway for others to also allow for folks to take parental leave. So I don't know that we're trendsetters, but at least people are now following the example. So I want to compliment them on that action and hope that some of the other folks throughout the community will see that as an example that should be followed. Thank you.
Absolutely. Great idea. And I'm glad that we pushed that forward. I'm not going to take a lot of time either. I wanted to say two things. I've done so many ribbon cuttings and. What did we do today, this morning? Yeah, the groundbreaking, all over the place. So I just want to tell those that are watching, just rest assured that your president is all over the county working for you. So I won't go into the specific ones, but great things are happening in the county. Many lights at the end of the tunnel are coming forth. And we're making it through and we're striving and more than surviving. But we're doing what we need to do and what the other businesses, economic development, everything that's going on. I mean, Hamilton County is on the move. And then lastly, I want to bring up, she's not here. I was going to talk about Bridget Doherty.
She's in the back.
Oh, can you, well, we can't get you on camera, but can you come up? And so the reason why I want her to come up is because, yeah, she's media communication, but she is awesome. With all this groundbreaking, all this ribbon cutting, all these interviews, all these press releases, yeah, that's her job. But she goes far beyond what her job is and everything is just in excellence. So when you get there, you know that everything is going to be set up. And so I'm just so proud that she's here working for the board and just wanted to acknowledge her. Because oftentimes, when I do my speeches out in the community, I forget to say, and there's Bridget Doherty. Thank you. But I just wanted to publicly say how great you are and how great you represent Hamilton County and how hard you work and how creative you are to make us look good. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda. Commission Administration.
Thank you, Madam President. So actually, I will go ahead, if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and hit by leave item number one, which is budget adjustment number 22. The board received this the other day. This is another one of the Common Pleas Court Technology Grants that were received from the State Supreme Court. I believe this is one, a Common Pleas project for redaction of personal identifying information in various documents. So John can confirm that. So the administration recommends approval of by leave item number one.
Thank you so much. Any discussion as relates to by leave one? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners. And on the regular agenda, the item number one is Resolution Number P079-21, authorizing the award of an invitation to bid and execution of an agreement with Alpha Video and Audio. This relates to the purchase of production equipment, video production equipment in Paul Brown Stadium related to the scoreboard control room. Ultimately, what this does is help to produce the game video with inside the stadium. The current equipment is obsolete and lacks the ability to get parts for that equipment. This is also part of the county's annual capital budget with PBS. So this is something that we had planned on allocating and spending within that capital budget. And the administration recommends approval.
Thank you so much. And we've discussed this a few times. It is coming before us formally. So I'll open it up for my colleagues. Any comments?
The only thing, just acknowledging this is part of the fund that we have to do. Can you, with this?
Yes, this is part of the capital budget and part of the capital obligation for capital expenditures at PBS. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No comments.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jeff. I see Eric is ready to go.
I am. I'm ready to go.
Hi, our county engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have three items today. Item number two is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the Board of Commissioners of Warren County for the construction of improvements to Fields Erdel Road from Butler Warren to Snyder. This is project number 502110 and the engineer's cost is $200,000. Fields Erdel is an east-west road and the county line runs down the center line. So we are doing this in conjunction with the Warren County Engineers Office so that we get both sides of the county line paved. Warren County will be administering the contract.
So what additional costs? We're paying the $200,000?
We're paying $200,000. That's for the portion in Hamilton County.
Okay. And then Warren County, how much are they paying?
I'm not sure what theirs is. I think they have more in their program than just Fields Erdel.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item number three is a resolution for an intergovernmental agreement between Hamilton County and Corray Township for the installation of a flashing pedestrian signal on Kemper Road at Wind Canton Drive. This, the township did a study that shows that this is safe and appropriate based on the board's policies. We've reviewed that and agree. Corray Township will be responsible for all costs involved, including design, installation, operation, and maintenance.
Okay, thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt item number three?
Second.
I think I said, is there a motion? So let me correct myself. I'd like to make a motion for item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer O Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is a resolution authorizing an agreement between various owners and the Board of County Commissioners required for the purchase of property determined necessary for the right. for the right and privilege to enter upon, make necessary improvements to the Hopper Road culvert located in Anderson Township. This is project 501821, the cost is $1,665.09, this is for two easements, one on the inlet and one on the outlet end of the structure.
Wow, that's pretty reasonable, isn't it?
Yeah, it's about 200 square feet is all these.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It's pretty small.
Yeah, so any comments as it relates to that? I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number four.
Second.
Commissioner Semardumus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have in front of us some consent agenda items, I'm going to kind of, I'm not going to do what I was, I normally do, which is a summary of the consent agenda items, but what I will do is open up for any of my colleagues that have any questions specifically on any of the consent agenda items. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. On here, we've got a few adjustments in funding with the CARES Act dollars, not the rescue, but the CARES Act, and in there, there were, I think the original one, we had, the spreadsheet said something different, I want to make sure. I'm sorry, item number six, I'm sorry, item number six, I believe it's item six.
It's actually item number five.
Five, item number five. So did we get the spreadsheet corrected?
Madam President, Madam Vice President, we do not have the spreadsheet on this corrected. I think what, what Vice President Reese was looking for is a kind of a crosswalk on this, if you will, that shows the, the numbers that have changed and how the numbers have changed, and I apologize, we don't have that today. I can verbally kind of walk you through it now, or if you want, if the board is comfortable moving forward with, there's one contractual item we have today that relates to this adjustment, so typically we like to adjust the plan before we do contracts associated with it. If you are comfortable moving forward with the contract, we can delay the plan until the next meeting, or I can verbally walk you through it. It's, it's your, it's your, either way, it's, it's just a board, this is the, the board's plan, so you're free to treat it however you want, if you wanted to do a, if you wanted to move forward with the contractual item, or if you just wanted to verbally walk through it, and we can get you a corrected version later, however you'd like to do it.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, I would like to hold the plan so that when we're voting on it, it's the actual, it's in the record what that plan is. The contract is a separate item, number six.
It is correct.
And I am more than willing to move with six, but I think five, I just don't feel comfortable when we don't have the paperwork in the, in the record. Doesn't hold up anything if I'm not mistaken, but I do want to know, corrected, what is the changes and what the funding is going toward. But six, moving forward, I have no problem with that, because that actually has the contract attached.
Yeah, so I too had highlighted this item, so Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, item five is the final resolution of the money being shifted?
Yes, item five, it simply shows how we would be adjusting the plan, so essentially what we're doing for folks who are watching at home is we had a contract with the Health Collaborative, we're going to be, and that was for the county's testing program, we're going to be reducing that contract by, and we have reduced that contract by roughly 4.5 million, and then reallocating those proceeds for testing coordination, for some capital equipment, and for rental assistance. And so this plan shows, if you were to compare this versus the last plan, the testing, the second line testing coordination, testing and vaccination coordination changes under community and economic assistance, rent and utility relief changes, and then in the last category, county facility improvements changes, but what we don't show on here is by how much.
Right.
And so I realize that can be a little confusing, so I'm happy, the administration's happy holding this item if, if that just is clearer for, for the board. I would recommend, as Vice President Reese said, that we would move forward with item number six, which is the actual contract.
Yes, and I, and I concur, I'm, I'm fine, from my own perspective, holding the item, the, the language is in, verbally written into the resolution, but it is not acknowledged from, you know, one to the other in the chart. So if we, if we need to hold that, that's fine with me, as long as the contract moves forward.
Sure, I'm willing to hold it also, as long as it doesn't stop any allocation of monies, and it doesn't sound like it does, so we can hold item five. Anything else?
No, that was, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Did you have any additional comments on consent agenda items?
Yeah, just one, item number seven is five appointments to the Economic Inclusion Advisory Council. These, I can't tell who is doing the recommending on these, but these are recommendations from the different groups that recommend to this advisory council, so I just want to thank these folks for being willing to step up and serve on this important council.
Thank you so much, and I could comment also on, good on what you were saying on item seven, we definitely need people more involved in such an important council, so. Okay, no additional comments, then what I will do, for adoption, we have item five through 21, and?
Six.
Oh, thank you. See, I wanted to wake you up over there. Thank you so much, we said five, just as good. So we have for adoption, item six through 21 and item 23. And then, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt item six through 21 and item 23.
Second.
Commissioner Semardumus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much, and then we have item, I don't have it written down, but it's to receive for the record, item 22, which is for liquor licenses that the Sheriff Department is not objecting to. So I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record, item 22.
Second.
Commissioner Semardumus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Any further business to come before the commission? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Semardumus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.